Monday, April 27th at 6:30 PM. Becky, roll call, please.
Mayor of Reeland.
Here.
Councilor Zins.
Here.
Councilor Segler.
Here.
Councilor Pop.
Here.
Councilor Peterson.
Here.
Okay, roll calls complete. Consent agenda, please.
Item three is approval of city council meeting minutes. Regular meeting, April 13th. Local Board of Appeal and Equalization on April 14th. And special meeting on April 15th. Item seven is the Pilein of Correspondence. RAM, February 27th. Meeting Minutes. LTE Broadband Committee. NEO Connective meeting notes. March 2020 Blight Officer Report. And East Range Childcare Survey Summary. And item 10 is approval of Claims Payroll and Receipt.
Any, anybody want to remove anything from consent agenda? Could I get a motion to approve consent agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agendas, right?
Motion by Councilor Zins, is there support?
I'll support that.
Support from Councilor Segler. Roll call, please.
Mayor of Reeland.
Yes.
Councilor Zins.
Yes.
Segler.
Yes.
Pop.
Yes.
Peterson.
Yes.
Okay, guests and citizens, Becky, there's nobody that's asked to speak?
No, and I think we just have two call-in people. Maybe one might be Al from the campground.
Okay.
I'm kind of figuring the other one is Dean. That's item nine B under mosquito control.
Okay, all right. We will move down to reports from staff. Is Supervisor West on?
He is not tonight.
Okay, librarian Sue Sowers?
Yes. We have begun a virtual walk-run program for the community, all of East Range communities. So it includes White Lakes, Aurora, Town of Light, and Diwada. And you can sign up online, there's a survey link on our Facebook account, or you can just call the library, or drop a note in the book drop. You have a library card, and we can get you one of those. If you don't have one, they're free. And it's running through May 15th. Just keep track of the miles you walk or run. And anybody who completes 25 miles in that time period will have their names put in a drawing for a $25 gift certificate. One for 17 and under, and one for 18 and older. And then there'll be three age categories, 0 to 17, 18 to 54, and 55 and up. And each of the top mileage earners will receive a $50 gift certificate for a local business. We are participating in the One Book, One Minnesota Read. The book is Because of Win Dixie by Katie Camillo. And we have been reading a chapter at Facebook. And that seems to be very popular. We have usually about 1,200 views a day on it. And we've also now asked the public, any kids or adults would like to, if they want to draw a picture of something to do with the story, and we'll post it on Windows. So people can see them as they're walking by. So that'd be kind of fun, kind of brighten things up a little bit. And I was awarded a grant for STEM Kits to Go through the Blandon Broadband Program of $2,000. And that will be used to purchase items to create kits with iPads or iPods and robotics and coding equipment that can be borrowed. And kids can bring it home to try it out. Things will be, apps will be preloaded, so they won't need an internet connection for those. So once we're open for business again, we'll be able to lend those out. And I'm also working with Jim Wycom through the Minnesota Department of Education in Blandon to get to funding for hotspots that we can then check out to people in the community. That's it.
Anybody have anything for Sue? Public Works Supervisor, Mayor. Jake, is Jake on?
Jake's on. He's in Public Utilities. Well, we had our sewer lines cleaned. They went through and did 25,083 feet to sewer line. It constitutes about a third of our sewer systems in town here. Found a lot of roots. Found a couple of manholes that had some pretty bad water leaks coming into them right where the crown meets the actual sewer drum. So those have to be sealed up at some point. We also found two locations in town where we have possible, one where there's a possible sewer line collapsing, and one where there's a sewer line that kind of separated. So there, once they finish with going through Aurora's sewer lines, they're going to come back and televise the two bad sections they found. So. Water plant made it through its bump. Like I said, twice a year, we go through this. The lake starts to get the runoff from the snowmelt, and the chemistry changes, and kind of throws us for a loop as far as treating it with the chemicals and the process we have. But we made her through okay, and that's looking normal. Other than that, running the COVID schedule, guys are happy, work's getting done.
Okay, anybody got any questions for Jake? Kenny?
Hey, can I ask Jake a question?
Yeah.
Quick, there's those two leaks or seals. Those were just done on, those seals leaks were on road projects that were just completed in the last six, seven years? Is there a reason that those would pop up that quickly?
Not that I can think of. Either it was a bad seal put in there, or the frost got at the manhole and lifted it a little, breaking that seal. I couldn't tell you without actually going in there and looking at it. He just said there was a lot of water going through. There's a manhole on Leeds and a manhole on Kent, where they really noticed the water coming in, and it's closer to the Coventry Road there.
Right, and those were two sections that, probably two of the newer sections in town that we have done.
Okay, do we know who did them?
I don't recall, Jake.
Okay. I'll have to look into it further, but yeah. This is something that just happens sometimes with the manholes. I don't have a good answer for you on that.
Okay, that's fine. I just was curious if we changed something up from, you know, old to new, or whatever.
Yeah. I wasn't here then, but I can definitely look into it and find out what was done and why those would possibly be leaking.
So is that a major cost to fix those leaks?
I'd have to get prices for that. I assume it's not cheap. But again, I'll have to look further into that. I just have the report of what they found. So, okay, thanks. It does have extra water coming into the wastewater plant to a significant amount. But for all I know, they could inject that and seal it up, or they'd have to dig it up and lift it, put new seal on there. I haven't looked into it that far yet.
Okay, Kenny?
Thank you.
Yep, can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay. Everything at Public Works is going as good as can be expected with the rotating shifts and staff. Today, we got the water turned on to the golf course, flushed that, and checked for leaks. Everything went as good as possible there. So the golf course staff can start their cleaning and get up and running for their season. We continue to keep sweeping our streets. Actually, all the residential streets are done. Today, we worked on Kennedy Drive. With a little bit of rain, we got that helped because that's one of the few streets we actually do the boulevards with the amount of sand that is on that stretch. Got that done today, so we'll just be finishing up a few of the parking lots in town and try and get it wrapped up this week. Aurora's waiting for the sweeper. I think they'd like to get it by Monday, so we're going to try and get wrapped up as well. New guys, both Zach was in the sweeper last week. He spent one day riding in it with me, getting trained in. Tuesday, I turned him loose, and he swept the rest of the week. Tomorrow, Alex is going to be in it as well. So both new guys will get their feet wet in that piece of equipment. Had a couple complaints last week regarding the dust on the dirt stretch of Leeds. One thing that we do is when we, when we apply our dust control, we like to have the road graded first. I wasn't able to grade it last week because there was still some snow on the south side of the road where it doesn't get sun, was hanging out onto the road. This week, today, that snow was gone, so we got Leeds Road graded today, and we got our dust control applied for that. That should work out well if we get a little bit of moisture again tomorrow, they're saying. So that dust control should take effect, and we should have that problem alleviated. The next step we're going to do is getting our docks all, some maintenance done on our docks and get them ready to go back in for the season with fishing opener coming and with the governor's announcement that campgrounds can be open as well. We'll get all that ready to go and get those installed in the upcoming week here, or next week at the latest. The only other thing I have is I spoke to Joe Palawa with Bolton and Mink last week. There was some questions regarding the project that took place last fall, getting the water and sewer lines in out at the campground for the new bathroom site, just regarding the finishing of that. And from what I understand, he was going to be getting ahold of Joel and Sop and having them finish up. That was actually part of their duties on the project. They'll finish that up, and Bolton and Mink will take care of getting them paid once it's complete. That's all I've got.
Any question for that? Are they responsible for blacktopping where they cut across the point road?
Correct, they are going to take care of the blacktopping as well. I don't, I'm assuming it'll be subbed out to somebody, you know, but, but that was all part of that bid from last year, from what I was told.
Okay, all right. Anybody got any questions for Kenny?
Yeah, this is Al at the campground. I got one question about that fencing in front of Site Number 52, which is actually a seasonal site. And there's no way they're going to be able to enter into that site unless we move them to a different site. That would be my only question.
Can we just take the fence down?
I would sue.
That's why I'm asking if I can remove that section of that fence.
Yeah, I would, I would take and just probably cut it at one spot, roll it off to the side, and let them get in and then.
Let them use that, okay.
Yeah.
That was it.
Okay, anybody, anything else?
Mayor?
Yeah?
Anything for Kenny, but I do have Wade's report, so.
Okay, go ahead.
All right, so Wade said everything's going as per plan at the arena, no hiccups there. His plan is to open the golf course on Friday, May 1st at 10 AM. A few things there, the clubhouse will be open only to allow the use of the bathroom facility and to purchase green fees, cart rentals, et cetera. They did put a piece of Plexiglas barrier up at the, at the counter there where people come in the door to purchase their, their green fees and such. They will limit the number of people in the clubhouse to two at any one time while maintaining social distancing. Single use of the carts unless it's an immediate family member. There can be a second person on the cart. No touch on the flagstick. Flagstick, the cup is going to be raised, no ball washers. And Dan has a plan for cart rental return. When the carts are returned, they'll be parked in a separate area to be sanitized before they're brought up to the area to be rented again, so. They're kind of, Wade said they're kind of mimicking what's going on at Evolus. Evolus's course has been open this week, and, and that's what they've been doing, and it's working out fine, so. And he is expecting with the governor's update this, this week now, there may be some more restrictions that might be eased, but, and then we'll make changes as the restrictions are lifted. And I think that's it.
All right, thank you, Dan. Ambulance Director Olstead. Mel, you on?
I am, can you hear me?
Yep.
Um, I don't have much. I just keep trying to locate PPE and hoard it the best I can. Ambulance three, John Carlton is taking to Fergus Falls in the morning to get the power load put in, which we found is very beneficial when we're trying to limit how many people are going on a call, so. One person is trying to run the whole call while the other one kind of limits contact with the patient, so it's going to be very helpful getting that other power load in. Other than that, I don't have much.
Okay, we got something later on in the agenda for you. Anybody got any questions for Mel? Okay, Chief Sular?
Yeah, so I just want to inform the council. Last Thursday, we interviewed nine applicants for Kyle's vacant position. Of those nine, we feel that there's five that we'd be comfortable with going on to the next stage, which is to present to my Public Safety Board for a decision on, on who to hire. So we're pretty excited about that. I think as this day and age is, you know, it's, it's hard to get people and keep them, but we were pretty happy. We had 10 quality applicants, we interviewed nine. We've got that limited down to five, so. We're looking forward to the next step, and the candidates have presented themselves, so.
Tim, do you have a date on that, Jim? To interview?
Going to be at our next meeting, so.
Pardon me?
May 10th. So we're at full staff right now, Chris, because with school closed, the school gave us Jordan back, so Jordan's been in the rotation since Kyle left, so. It's been nice, we don't have that shortage right now. One thing we don't have is we're not honoring a lot of vacation requests. So, you know, we see definitely a need. I would say it's probably, we're two months from getting that individual started and, and, you know, working with somebody, so. It's a long process, but certainly excited to see who we come up with, so.
Anybody have any questions for Tim? Chief House?
So, Chris, not to, I have one more item.
Oh, I'm sorry, Jim.
So I think we can all agree that the new ordinance for the golf cart was certainly effective, and we're seeing the results of that last year. And I know a lot of people that, they, they're looking for their 2020 sticker, and I know Becky has them, and I think they're available through the city. You just have to call City Hall, and they'll get mailed. But obviously, if your cart's been registered, and it's got the 19 sticker, and City Hall's closed, we, we understand there's some leeway there for you to get that. But they are available, and he's ready to hand out for the people that need them. So if you paid in 2019, you don't pay, you just give sticker for 2020, and then you wouldn't pay again until 2021. So we're seeing great compliance with that, and we've warned a couple. But I think the most disturbing thing, and I think the council will agree, is that the ATV and four-wheeler traffic through town, uptown, you know, up and down our roads has never been allowed, and it isn't allowed. And it's certainly to and from the nearest trailhead at 10 miles an hour. And I think White Lakes has one of the best trail systems around. You can drive around in sandals on an ATV or a side-by-side and not even get your feet muddy. So I question, you know, why these kids and young teens feel the need to race up and down our roadways. Every hub of town has a beautiful trailhead that leads you into the trail that goes around town. So we know that it's a problem, and we recognize it. And we believe it's time to, to send out some ATV patrol just to focus on those areas and educate, and we've met with the new game warden, Duke Broton. He's also can't believe what he sees going on. So it's not just here, it's a township, it's Aurora, it's all these strange communities. So we're going to stagger some shifts and go out and enforce. But a lot of it falls on the parent. And if the parent can't educate their child to go to and from the nearest trailhead and stay on the trails, that citation gets issued to the parent for allowing that behavior. And at last I looked, it was $385 when we cite them. And for the young kids that are just learning to ride the green space behind the three ball fields, if you'd like to pull in the firing MS parking lot, drop your tailgate and watch your child drive, or learn how to drive that ATV or that small dirt bike, we, we support that. You can sit there all day, and he can, he can ride in that green space area legally and practice before he's ready to go on the trip. I see people using the back of the arena parking lot, I'm okay with that, too. But, you know, allowing them to go up and down the street and think for any way, shape, or form that that, that's safe, I'm just confused on, on when did that ever become okay? So my message is it's not okay. We're going to enforce it, we are going to get on top of it, and we're going to educate, you know, what, what's acceptable and what's not, so.
Okay. Anything else, Jim?
I think that's it, thank you.
Fire Chief, Tony?
Um, as, can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay. As many of you are aware, we had a wildland fire last Saturday between Allen Junction, or not Allen Junction, Stephen Chambers and the hotel. It ended up burning 14 and a half acres. I just want to thank the Aurora Fire Department, the US Forest Service, East Range PD, White Lakes, our guys. They did a pretty good job working together, containing it, what it was. And then we're just continuing with the social distancing. We have our physicals set, but we're going to probably postpone them to the fall, so everyone's fit tested. And that's all I have.
Okay, anybody got any questions for Tony? Tony, have they figured out what started it yet?
No, I've never heard. I know the, um, the new game warden, um, Broton was out there. And as of yesterday, they haven't determined the cause.
Okay, all right, thank you. Becky?
Just agenda items, Mayor.
Okay. Attorney Brunfeld?
Mayor and council, nothing for me, just agenda items.
Okay. Just for supervisors, the meeting, the staff meeting tomorrow morning's at 10, not 9. I've got a 9 o'clock meeting I got at 10, so just put that down for 10 o'clock tomorrow. Reports from city councillors, Councilor Zins?
I have nothing.
Councilor Segler?
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Just one thing, we met with the Joint Rec Board last Wednesday night, and kind of as we know, everything's on hold as of now. If anything changes, changes, Mark will get ahold of us, and we'll go from there. He's planning, he is doing an interview, or calling kids that had applied for lifeguarding, and is going to get everybody in place, and we'll see what happens with the beaches, you know, when that time comes, that's all I've got.
Okay. Councilor Pop?
Nothing except agenda items, Mayor.
Okay. Councilor Peterson?
I don't have anything.
Okay. Only two items I got, I had a, Jake and I had a conference call today with the MPCA. Our permit is up June 30th. We did not meet the requirements of our last five-year MPCA permit. We were supposed to be already up and running Mercury, the Mercury Project. They do understand that it was not our fault. It was a financial situation where the funding didn't come in time, but we're, we're still going to get a notice of violation. There'll be no fine on this one right now. They'll be sending out within a couple of weeks a new guideline, or I shouldn't say guideline, a new timetable that we have to meet. And I did inform them we'll be calling for bids on May 11th, and probably opening on June 11th, I think it is. And they're well aware of that, and their engineers have been meeting with our engineers, so. Just thought I would, you know, if you see a, if you see a, a notice of violation from the MPCA, that's what that's about, so. And then the East Range Joint Powers Board, we met last week on, on grants to local businesses. We only had one local business fill out the app last week. Golden Paws, we did give them a $1,000 grant. And we're meeting tomorrow morning at 9, and I, I've been told there's quite a few others that have been turned in. The East Range Joint Powers Board has $20,000 that they feel they can give out in grants, so we'll wait to see how many more we have tomorrow for that. So those are my two issues. Anybody got anything for me? Okay, moving on, old business, public hearing proposed tax abatement, twenty twenty street utility construction project. Becky, just, we gotta have a public hearing right now?
Right, Shannon is on the call, and you need to open the public hearing, I believe, at this point.
Okay, I'll, I'll make them, do I have to call for a motion of it, or what? Or just open it?
Uh, Mayor, you, Mayor, you can just, as a chair of the meeting, you can just convene the hearing.
Convene the hearing, public hearing for the proposed tax abatement for the street utility construction project.
And Mayor, I received no comments, the email or request to participate in the Zoom meeting tonight.
Okay, Shannon, are you on?
I am, Mayor.
Anything you have for us?
Uh, just to summarize, the purpose of the hearing is to receive comment, uh, we're ultimately implementing a tax levy to, or a, a pledge of tax levy in support of the proposed bond issue to fund, uh, the street and utility reconstruction project that we have going this year. The notice that went in the paper and the resolution, you can see include a list of parcel ID numbers, those are all, uh, properties in proximity to Suffolk Avenue, we just have to identify properties that, uh, receive some benefit associated with the project. And, you know, that's what we've done to comply with statute, more than happy to answer questions on the proposed abatement, but ultimately, it's a means of issuing bonds without levying special assessments against benefited properties for the project that's being proposed.
Okay, anybody have any questions for Shannon? So Becky, is it my understanding I can close that then?
If there's no other comment.
Uh, Mayor, a couple of, couple of comments, I did have a couple of questions, and Becky was able to, to answer them for me, but maybe, maybe Shannon could elaborate on a couple of questions that I had, was the purpose of asking the school district for the letter?
Sure.
Second one was in regard to the properties that were listed on there, you, you had explained that those properties could benefit from them, but there is no tax obligation or any es- extra assessment associated with those properties, correct?
Correct, well, they're not taxed in any manner differently than any other property in the community. You know, if we implement a tax levy, it'll be spread against all taxpaying properties in the community in the same manner that all of their other property taxes are spread. We simply have to make this linkage according to statute between the project and, and benefited properties to demonstrate that the properties that benefit pay sufficient tax to make it an equitable use of that authority under Minnesota statute. Um, it's a bit of a strange concept, but at the end of the day, it doesn't impact those property taxes and property taxpayers in any different manner than anybody else. Uh, your second question was on a school district letter that we solicited, and the school district was kind enough, uh, to, the school superintendent was kind enough to provide a letter indicating that the school district wasn't gonna financially participate in our street and utility reconstruction project. Reason we asked them to do that is, under Minnesota statute again, it says we are limited in term to fifteen years on a tax abatement, uh, unless we have another local unit of government decline to participate in the project in writing. So I sent the school superintendent an email, uh, asking if they would like to participate financially in our street and utility reconstruction project. I also provided a draft letter that he could return indicating that that wasn't part of their overall mission, that educating our kids is, but not necessarily paying for our street utility reconstruction project, he was kind enough to put that letter on letterhead and supply it to us, we need that for our files to demonstrate that we're complying with statute. Uh, and the sole purpose of that was to extend the term of the bonds from fifteen to twenty years.
Okay.
Okay, perfect, thank you, yeah, that, uh, and thanks to Becky for answering those questions, but being the first time going through this, I'm sure maybe the other councillors maybe benefited from that also, so.
Any other questions for Shannon? Okay, do I close the public hearing then, before I do the resolutions?
Yes, Mayor, just go ahead and just close the hearing.
Okay, I'll close the public hearing, and we'll move on to, to, uh, eight A. Uh, I'm looking for a motion to adopt City of Hoyt Lakes, Minnesota Resolution Number twenty twenty dash zero one four, Resolution approving property tax abatement for certain properties located in the city of Hoyt Lakes.
I'll make that motion, Mayor.
Motion by Councillor Segler, is there support?
Support that motion.
Support by Councillor Peterson, any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Mayor of Reeland?
Yes.
Councillor Zins?
Yes.
Segler?
Yes.
Pop?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Okay, then we'll move down to the next resolution. To adopt City of Hoyt Lakes Resolution twenty twenty dash zero one five, Resolution authorizing the issuance, sale, and delivery of two million one hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars in general obligation tax abatement and utility revenue bond series twenty twenty B. Looking for a motion.
I'll make that motion to adopt Resolution twenty twenty dash zero one five.
Motion by Councillor Pop, is there support?
I'll support that.
Support by Councillor Zins, any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Mayor of Reeland?
Yes.
Councillor Zins?
Yes.
Segler?
Yes.
Pop?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Motion, motion carries. Moving to old business eight B, staffing, um, we've got quite a few things under my staffing question as to the council is, are we ready to go back to full staffing on May fourth where possible? What's everybody's thoughts?
I would think if they can, uh, maintain their social distancing, I don't see why we couldn't.
Okay. I, I'm, I'm in agreement with you, Brian. Uh, what's, anybody else got any thoughts, any supervisors?
Yeah, I'm good to go full staff whenever.
Okay.
Yeah, same here for me, Chris.
Okay. All right.
And I'm, I'm in favor of, uh, if, you know, going back to the full staffing, I think with the golf course opening up, Kailene will be at the arena, Wade will be at the golf course, and, uh, and then obviously, there'll have to be some stipulations on breaks where there's, like, with, with Kenny's crew there, staggering breaks and, uh, trying to limit the amount of, uh, jumping from one piece of equipment to another, but, uh, I'm sure that can all be addressed.
Yeah, we can, we can take care of that stuff, Dan, not a problem.
Kenny, I have a question for you as far as, uh, vehicles and, uh, hiring summer staff. Are we gonna be able to get around with these people without, uh, having three or four people in a cab?
Yeah, I've, I've given that quite a bit of thought, Dave, uh, you know, in a, in a normal summer with the amount of staff, uh, part-time staff I would have down at the city garage, I've looked at ways of, of social distancing, uh, and still being able to accomplish what we need to accomplish. Um, I would stagger the start and stop times of the summer staff so that I would have, say, the, the mower grapples, they would come in at a certain time. Uh, I would be there before that in the morning, the back overhead door would be open. Uh, they would come in, go straight to their mowers, um, and, and leave, you know, so ver- very limited contact with anything in the shop as far as areas, doorknobs, light switches, et cetera. I've also kinda informed them when I spoke to them on the phone, um, you know, how we would not return to the shop for, you know, their morning and afternoon break, that they could just take what they need with them on their mowers during the day and, uh, take breaks wherever they may be mowing, if they wanna pull over for, take a break and, et cetera. Um, same thing at lunchtime, if they come in for, need to get their vehicle to go home. You know, they can do so by just pulling their mower up by their vehicle, hopping in or coming back. Um, the other staff, you know, like, say, the boys we normally have doing the general labor work, um, mowing, push mowing, weed whacking, potholes, et cetera, I, I've kinda come up with some ideas. We have a couple of old trucks, um, that were actually going to be, um, taken out of the rotation this year because of the purchase of a couple of the new trucks we've got in the past. We were going to donate them to the fire department for disaster drills, where they, the trucks would be, you know, cut up in mock disaster drills. Um, I think we'll actually postpone giving those over to the, uh, fire department, and I'll have Zach go through and make sure they're roadworthy enough for in-town use, and that would alleviate the problem of, uh, enough, uh, trucks for the other staff to run, therefore, we wouldn't have to have, you know, multiple kids piled in vehicles, I'm thinking. I could maybe get by with, you know, a truck for every two people or something like that. So I, I, I think, you know, I'm pretty confident we can, between scheduling, staggering, and, and whatnot, we can get through it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Is, 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 is the council okay with starting that back up on May fourth then?
I am. You, you need a motion or anything like that, Chris, or?
I don't know, Becky, do we need a motion on that?
I don't think so.
Okay.
Yeah, I just think it's, uh, I think we leave it up to each individual supervisor on what they have to do. I know, like, at City Hall, with City Hall still being closed, and this has got nothing to do with opening buildings at this time. You know, Becky's been kinda rotating her staff, they can maybe one work days, one work afternoon, same thing with the library. Um, Sue's got a plan in there, too, so I think we, we kinda leave it up to the supervisors to do what they gotta do, so. Okay. Um, golf course, Dan, I, I, have they talked at all about, like, golf tournaments or leagues or net seniors or any of that stuff yet?
Uh, the one thing we did say is they will not be able to allow any of the leagues to start up or tournaments or anything like that, so it's strictly, strictly gonna be open for, you know, individual use right now, and, as I said, Wade is thinking that there's gonna be more easing of restrictions coming up, and they'll, they'll just have to adhere to, to the new restrictions as they're released, so. But, obviously, it would be unavailable to, uh, to try to have a tournament or even allow league to get started.
Okay. Any other questions on golf course? Fisherman's Point Campground, Dan?
All right, uh, I had lengthy conversations with Patty and Al today, and, uh, I know Al was on the call, and he can, he can chime in whenever he wants, but. In lieu of, uh, the governor's easing of restrictions and a couple of the local campgrounds, Hooto Point, uh, they elected to allow seasonals. What I'm suggesting is that we allow seasonals to, to go out to the campground, and that could be effective as early as tomorrow. With the stipulation that the only facilities that will be open will be the, there'll only be porta-johns out there, no showers, no vault toilet, no laundry building, no office building. Uh, and Patty had said that if we do agree to open, that she would be willing to, to make the calls to the seasonal people to let them know and to explain the, uh, the stipulations.
Any other calls?
For, for comments on that.
I have a comment, Mayor.
Yup.
Um, in your packet, I did an adjustment of the second half of their seasonal payment, and those figures are in your packet, so, um, I probably need a council motion to approve on the balance due for Lake Shore would be, uh, one thousand one seventy-three, and non-Lake Shore is eight hundred eighty-nine, if you agree with, um, how we figured it out by day there. And actually, seasonal sites will, they need to pay here, um, if they could call in with a credit card or, um, drop their check in the drop box, we kinda liked that second half before they occupy, we could work happy on that.
Okay.
I have a question for you, on this, uh, seasonal sites that you, sheets that you sent out, um, it shows a bunch of the first half deposits not paid, have they all been paid?
They've all been paid, yes.
Okay.
Any other questions on that? So I guess I'm looking for a motion, a motion to approve the new second half balance and for seasonal sites to be open tomorrow.
I'll make a motion, Becky.
Excuse me, I think you guys overlapped there.
I'll make a motion that allow seasonal camping to begin tomorrow with the adjusted seasonal rates.
Okay, Dan, would you add to that, that, uh, uh, they can't get to their site until they've paid the second half?
Okay, yes, adding the fact that, uh, in order to take occupancy, the second half of their rental agreement needs to be paid.
Okay.
And then we also did, I guess we should include in there, too, and this is gonna be part of the rules that Patty is gonna convey to the people, we're not gonna allow a second unit in the campsites, and we're gonna ask them to limit it to immediate family only and, and follow the, the, the group rules, no more than ten people or whatever, so there, there's gonna be some pretty strict guidelines, too, as to, you know, it's not gonna be a free-for-all to have a family reunion because somebody has a, a seasonal site or whatever, so.
Okay. Can I get support to that motion?
I'll support.
Support by Councillor Segler, any other discussion?
Um, there was some talk previously about adding additional seasonal sites. Is that something that we were gonna look into, or are we just gonna wait to see what happens with the governor, to see if we can allow recreational use in the future?
Chris, uh, it's a good point, Chris, let's talk about that, let's get this motion done, and then I've got a couple of things on the campground, I've talked to some legislators, is that okay?
Okay.
Um, roll call, please.
Mayor of Reeland?
Yes.
Councillor Zins?
Yes.
Segler?
Yes.
Pop?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Motion carries, uh, Chris, what, I, I had a long discussion with, uh, Representative Lizagard yesterday, and, uh, he, he requested, I sent him an email on my concerns, which I did, and I basically said that, um, according to the governor's rule, that all seasonal camp, or not seasonal, excuse me, recreational campsites, including remote campsites, are to be stayed closed until further notice. So I asked him specifically, so does that mean the Boundary Waters, because the Boundary Waters is remote camping? And he didn't have an answer for me, I said, I said Hoyt Lakes has a campground with seventy-five sites, uh, not counting the seasonals, that are used by ninety-nine percent by local people, which makes more sense to open that or to open a Boundary Waters that's got thousands of people from out of state coming here. I highly, I highly suggested to him that the state shouldn't be selling, um, out-of-state fishing license at this time, which, which would stop people from coming from out of state into, into the state, spreading the COVID. And he thought that was a good die and good idea, one of his staff got back to me, and they're working on that. Uh, I was approached by three or four people about turning the whole campground into seasonal sites if we have to. And I, and I, I don't know what Dan thinks on that, but I'm thinking we, like, Walz is supposed to have a big announcement on Thursday. I think if we can maybe just delay it a week or two to, till we hear what, what, uh, what they're planning, what are your things, thoughts, Chris?
Um, well, yeah, I guess it just depends what he says, 'cause I know, um, I don't, I don't know if, how I feel about turning the entire campground into seasonals, because supposedly, say, in the middle of the summer, he lifts that recreational use, you know, there people that maybe couldn't afford to get a seasonal that might want to come for a weekend and go camping, I know it's a really, it's really a bummer that, um, there's no recreational use, just because there's so many people here that just go down to the point, the getaway, that they can't do that, you know, but I completely understand.
No, and, and I wasn't suggesting that we turn them all into seasonals, I was asked that by three different people, though, that they specifically said, just turn them all into seasonals, and I said, I think we just need to take it to us and give a week or two here.
Okay, that's fine.
And, Mr. Val, I have a comment on that, that it wouldn't, wouldn't, I, at this point, we wouldn't be able to turn them all into seasonals because the shower buildings and the showers wouldn't be open, that would limit us to less bathrooms, as soon as we get the water turned on, the grounds won't be freezing the water, then we'll have bathrooms that open up, but shower buildings not until further notice, and regular campers not till further notice, so it would only be maybe upping the seasonals slightly and keeping some, some good campsites open for when it does open. Because campsite one and two and five, they would probably, if we could rent them for two months straight, we'd be way ahead of what we'd do as if we gave it away as a seasonal, so me and Patty are kinda selecting and choosing what seasonals, if we wanted to up it, keep the flow of traffic through here and try and keep, like Governor Walz says, don't let people travel from state to state, we don't wanna get this on the internet where somebody from Texas We don't wanna get this on the internet where somebody from Texas or Florida can make reservations and come up here and spend two weeks or something. So that was my concern.
Yeah, my, my thought is we just kind of put it on hold until, you know, a week or two and, until we find out what Governor Walz is gonna do. Dan, are you good with that?
Yeah, it's, it's good with that, and I know Al wanted to bring it up, and I'm glad you brought it up, Chris. But just to get the other counselors also thinking about that is say if, say if things are closed up for another month. And you know, they're talking that we're, we're not supposed to see a spike till mid-July, so. And things could go for the whole summer, but just to kind of be thinking in the back of your mind that if, if we were to offer more seasonals. How many, and they would kind of pick and choose so we could make sure that the isolation would stay in effect. But the more people we get out there too, uh Al and I and Patty discussed in, in length about when and if. We could ever open that shower building and they were very, very apprehensive about the steam that's created in the shower buildings. And then they're supposed to go in there and, and clean when that bacteria or the, the virus could be floating in the air. And so it's, it's really a, a touchy situation to get to the point where we could actually open up the showering part of our facility. But uh, you know, so these people that are coming in now are basically gonna have to rely on their own camper for, for showering and so forth. They'll have the, the porta johns to, to deal with what they can deal with there, but uh the rest of it, you know, it's gonna be. An extra process of hauling water and probably hauling more things to the dump station than, than normal, so.
Okay.
I've got a question for Mitch. Um if we were to open additional campsites, could we restrict it to local residents?
I think you probably, yeah, I think you probably could.
I guess I, you know, going to what uh Dan is saying, opening up on the internet, we opened up additional twenty. I think I would want people, you know, the whole idea is, you know, stay at home type thing, stay close to home. Um you know, I, I would, I would think that there's probably plenty of people that are local. That would want to, to take those sites. And we wouldn't have people from coming out of the area into, into the area. And I was wondering if that would be, if, if it's something that we could do.
And it's your campground, I mean, you, you know, you could, and especially in these times, you would have discretion to set those parameters.
Okay, thank you.
Dave, that's a very good point, Dave, I think come next week, if we get any more clarification, that's something we can address. Um if, if we get more clarification, I can call a special council meeting in a three-day period to, if we can open up something else. And I think the council should consider, what do we consider local? Uh that's the.
Right, the rural eight lakes, you know.
Yeah, what do we call local, and I'm fine with whatever you think.
Okay, thanks.
Okay. Okay, we'll move on to uh playgrounds and skateboard parks, Tim, are you still on, is the skateboard park closed? I don't even know that.
We had one more, one more question at the campground.
Okay.
Um we wanted to know if the fishing docks are gonna be open this weekend, or are we gonna wait another week until we hear from Governor?
Kenny?
Fishing, the fishing piers, the T dock? There's no way to social.
Yeah, uh I was reading through the uh governor's uh stuff about campgrounds when they came out last week. And according to what I read, it said no communal uh activities such as offices, uh stores. Restroom, showers, facilities, et cetera, and it also said docks. Now that to me, I, I spoke to Chris when I saw him at City Hall today about this, it's kind of a gray area to me and I'm gonna look for some more clarification. Um uh according to Governor Walz, the boat landings are supposed to be open for the upcoming fishing season. Which I would assume means having docks out, but I didn't know under the campground thing, when he says no docks. If that meant the fishing piers or if that meant boat launching docks. So I was looking for some clarification on that uh today, I haven't found it yet, that's a question I have as well.
The boat launching docks, um I already have a no fishing sign on there and we can um re-enhance that with maybe another two, sign or two. That they're not to fish off the boat landing docks, the T docks would be, well, you wouldn't have to put one in, we could close the one down below their office. We could.
Right, no, and we could rope off or, or barricade off the, the wooden dock down by the office. The other one I could just not put in and that's not a problem, um but like I say, my question was, when it said campgrounds, no docks. I just didn't know if that meant boat launching docks or fishing piers, it didn't, it didn't exactly clarify it.
Well, if you don't put the docks in, I'll catch more fish than everybody, cause my boat will be.
Well, I, I think, you know, I think for safety issues, you really should have the docks in for the boat landings, um I mean.
I think people launch their boat no matter what.
Right, but I think it's still a lot safer uh when a person's backing in a boat and, and not, somebody else with them is standing on the dock to catch the boat and stuff too. And for getting in and out of boats.
I think the boat docks need to go in, we just need.
Yes, I agree.
Yeah, we just need to put a sign on the boat docks.
My feeling also there, Chris, is I think we will go ahead with putting the, the boat docks in. But I think Kenny should refrain from putting the, the aluminum T dock in and we should fence the, the other dock out off. Because there is really no way to social distance on, on either one of those docks properly, so.
And Patty and I both agree with that.
Yeah, okay, so Kenny will put the two docks in then, Kenny, by fishing opener?
Yeah, uh actually all three, I'll put the Colby, I'll put the Colby dock in as well as boat, boat launching docks on Whitewater.
Okay, perfect. Anything else on the campground?
One more, one more request today, I, it's kind of uh not what, one we agree with, somebody asked if campground's not gonna be open. Could they come out and um have a fire in a fire pit and have a picnic without being overnight camping? And if it would be free, and I said, um I, I'm not thinking that's happening. And we didn't wanna say that's not happening without hearing somebody agree with us.
Well, I, I thought a part of Governor Walz's order was that uh uh parks were open and like, like, like a picnic areas are open. My thought there would be, isn't there a, a picnic area down on the end of uh the back bay or the uh, that back loop?
There is a picnic area, but that shelter has thirty-six chairs in it, so we looped it off.
What's the council think on that?
Yeah.
That will just encourage big groups if we leave those open.
Correct, yeah, I'm thinking that, I mean with, with having the fishing docks closed off, I'm assuming that, you know. One of the most popular places to fish on Whitewater early is from shore, so I'm sure people aren't in the campsites. That people may start walking in through the campsite and then using that shore to fish off of. Might get to be a, a problem to limit the use of, you know, can they start a campfire if they're in there? It's, it's a good question, it's gonna be a tough enforcement thing too, if, if we say no, and if we say yes, it's probably gonna be a free for all.
And a bigger problem.
Right.
Yeah, I'd rather enforce and try and say no than have a twelve or fifteen campsites going. Where they're sitting four at a picnic table, they're not over the limit, they're not paying to even use the campsite. But going on the, going into a campsite and fishing offshore, not an issue. Till it gets to be a group of people that start lighting a fire.
Mm-hmm.
Just curious, they wanted to come and picnic and have a fire into the night and like a night out and not have to pay for that. And I said, well, we're gonna have to clean up after you no matter what happens.
Well, according to the governor's orders, the only campsite right now that can be open are seasonal sites. That should, that should eliminate that issue right there. Those campsites are closed. If you're not a seasonal. Recreational campsites.
And now we have something to tell them, if they're not a seasonal, they're not allowed to use any campsite.
Correct. Okay, that's, that's what the governor's orders are. And that would, that would include not allowing them to walk through the site to get to the shoreline to fish, Dave? No, that wouldn't, that wouldn't stop them from walking through, but to use that site, whether it's for putting a fire or anything. That's restricted according to the governor's orders. He's opening it up to fishing, but he isn't opening it up to campsites that are used on a rotating basis. Is my understanding how the orders are.
If everybody would open that, Becky put in your packets, that Fisherman's Point Campground packet, and if you go back to where it says private, public campgrounds. I need a clarification on this, it's at the bottom of the page. And uh the second uh bullet point, communal amenities may not be open for use. Except for the following that may be open, provided social distancing and enhanced cleaning protocols are followed. Bathrooms, showers, retail food, laundry facilities, fish cleaning stations and docks. Doesn't that mean that can be open, those can be open with proper enhanced cleaning protocols?
I think you, you could interpret it that way, Chris, and I made a couple of phone calls today. I called the DNR first to try to get some clarification on it and I didn't get any help. And then I called over to the uh, to the office at the McCarthy Beach State Park to see what they were doing. Because they're allowing the parks to be open for day use. And I was curious if they were allowing the bathroom facilities to be open. And the only facility they're leaving open right now until May fourth, until the governor's order changes. Is just their vault toilets.
Okay.
Able to come in and use the park to do whatever, but the, the only facility that's open, so. Now, they did say that there's a couple of campgrounds up the North Shore that also kind of serve as a wayside rest. Where they do have year-round water turned on year-round, so those, those are open, those bathrooms are open. They do have a more rigorous cleaning schedule for those bathrooms. But they're also having a lot of problems in those things because there tends to be larger gatherings of people. And people are congregating uh on the, the walking trails and stuff, so it's, you know, it's a good thing, but it's also causing some issues, so.
Okay.
I think it would strictly be to our discretion, whether we felt we wanted to, we were felt safe that we could open the bathroom and shower facilities. This enhanced cleaning protocol, I think right now with, with, with the uh COVID threat. Is I, I don't think Patty or, or Al or either one of them are comfortable having to go in there on a routine basis to clean up with. You know, multiple different people coming in, so.
Okay, well, I'm fine leaving it the way we've discussed, that it's just seasonal sites and none of these things are open until, until we get better clarification from the governors. Is, is the rest of the council okay with that?
Yep.
Okay, all right, anything else on the campground?
Yep, we're gonna hang up, okay?
All right, thank you, Al.
You're welcome, I know.
Bye, okay, playground, skateboard park, Tim, have you, Tim, are you still on?
Yep.
Um is the skateboard park closed?
It should be locked up, as you've seen, though we've got some creative youth that have made their way inside there. Uh for them, it's not a jungle gym, um sometimes we find that old eight-eighty, eight-key lock open. And uh if it's just a couple of them and social distancing are there, we might turn a blind eye for half hour, an hour, and then we shag them on there. But right now, as it sits, it should be locked up and closed, yeah.
Okay, um and in the beach, uh what are we gonna do? Now, I know the lifeguard issue, Dan, or Brian is still kind of on hold right now, but what if we don't have it open? Are we, are we gonna allow people to use the beach?
It's a good question, I don't know the answer, I guess, because it's pretty tough to maintain. Social dis, you know, how do you, you know, I, you just have to put up signs, swim at your own risk, I guess, same type of thing with the playgrounds. If people go in there now, it's at their own risk. I mean, I think we got a, we've got a couple months or a month and a half, at least before we really have to make a final determination on that. But it comes down to, it'll be swim at your own risk, is my opinion.
Okay, something for everybody to think about for, for now, huh?
Hmm.
Okay, um next item is the commercial utility bills, I know Becky, you said you've gotten one request. Um I don't know what the council feels about that, and how many of them are having problems, Beck?
But just one has reached out, like, and we thought maybe we could do a, a shut-off rate like we do for. Snowbirds that leave and it would be okay to do in our system, um but then you had said you might be doing some grants tomorrow. So I just, you know, do you want me to wait until after tomorrow to uh make any further decisions on that? That's fine too, but I just had the one business reach out.
And it's the one business that's completely closed down because of this too, it's not their fault, it's the bowling alley, they don't, I mean, he, he doesn't have food to sell. So he's a hundred percent locked down, um so I know his bill is going down. Um after my meeting tomorrow, we'll see if he, if he applied for a grant or not, I don't know that, but you know, I think that's something, without him being in there and being used. The utility, the shut-off rate probably is a good idea, so everybody think of that.
I would agree, I think that's a good idea.
Okay.
I wouldn't have a problem with that at all.
Okay.
We should probably have a motion to that regard, Mayor.
And let's do a motion on his right now, uh that uh the bowling alley be, uh their, their water and sewer bill be lowered. To the shut-off rate uh until he can reopen. Motion by Counselor Segler, support?
Support.
Support by Counselor Zins, any other discussion? Roll call please.
Mayor Breland?
Yes.
Counselor Zins?
Yes.
Counselor Segler?
Yes.
Counselor Pop?
Yes.
Counselor Peterson?
Yes.
Okay, uh motion carries, the East Jane Joint Powers, I brought that up earlier, um I'll, I'll keep the council posted if there's any other grants. Uh Northspan's been doing a nice job, they, they've reached out and they were helping anybody that was having trouble with the applications. There was a little bit of discussion that the applications were kind of lengthy, um the prob, the, the issue is, it's for both a grant or a loan. So they fill it out one time, um and for the grant now, and they wouldn't have to refill it out if they're gonna ask for a loan. We've got about forty thousand dollars that we could also, we're looking at giving out for loans, so I'll, I'll keep you updated after tomorrow's meeting, so. Next item on, on the list is uh a resident concerned requesting allowing chickens. Chris, any ideas? You worked on the council when we addressed it last time.
Yeah, I was curious what your conversations were previously when this has been, has come up. Um I, I did look into some of the other towns, like down in the cities and Duluth, just to see. Because it seems to be becoming a popular thing where cities are allowing chickens. And so I did see some interesting things, you know, like where they have to have a permit, they have to have them in the backyard. Um you know, no roosters, and then the limit was different too, like Minneapolis had a limit of ten. And they actually had that, you could get a permit for a rooster, um but you know, I feel like maybe we could make it work for some people. Or maybe we just wanna approve certain parts of town, maybe the outskirts, I don't know, um. And then also too, I thought, you know, maybe we could inform, you know, have some rules where, you know, three strikes and you're out. You know, Jet will come collect your chickens and bring them to some farm out in Palo or something. Um I don't know, what are, are there any thoughts about, what, what do you guys think?
I personally do not want chickens in town, um I think we went through this before and I don't wanna, I personally, I don't want them. Um I think it'd be a nightmare for our police, for our animal control. I, I just think it's too big of an issue that I don't wanna be a part of, so I'm gonna make a motion that we don't allow chickens in the city of Hoyt Lakes.
Okay, there's been a motion made by Counselor Segler, is there support? I will support that, is there any other discussion? Is there any other discussion? Well, uh, roll call, please.
Mayor Vreeland?
Yeah, uh, yes.
Council Zins?
Yes.
Segler?
Yes.
Pop?
Yes.
Peterson?
No.
My, my only comment, uh, uh, motion carries four to one. My only comment is that, on that is, when the citizens in this town clean up their blight and keep their dogs and cats from running all over town, I'll reconsider chickens. As mayor, that is my serious comment, when I don't have to deal with every other day dogs running all over the place, uh, they can't keep dogs hooked up, what are they gonna do with chickens, so?
I agree with you a hundred percent, Chris.
All right, moving on, East Range Lions Club cleanup, uh, Beck, is that, do you have something on that?
Right, um, Rick Bradford, as you know, and the East Range Lions, um, have a cleanup day, and normally it's been a gathering at the community building, and with COVID-19, um, he's proposing a cleanup week, and he wants to start it on Monday, May fourth. Um, and anyone that needs bags and safety vests, um, can contact Rick at a phone number. And hopefully Kenny, I'm wondering if the Public Works Department is okay picking up those visible bags during a whole week rather than you normally do it, um, on one day. And then the area, oh, okay.
I'm sorry, no, that, that's not a problem.
Okay, so different areas, um, you can contact Rick Bradford, County Road 110 from the arena to the Minnesota Power Road, Community Building and White Lakes Beach Parking Lot area, Arena in Arena Service Road to Suffolk, County Road 110 from Dorchester to the White Lakes Golf Course Road, any biking, hiking or off-road trails, ball field areas, Dorchester and Kennedy to the water plant, and anywhere else you see a need. Um, we'll put an ad in the shopper, and we do usually send a letter to all the businesses. And I don't really need a, a motion of any kind, Mayor, but just to let people know that it will begin Monday, May fourth and be a whole week instead of one day.
Perfect, thank you very much. Anybody got any comments on that? Um, Water Carnival, I had, I talked with Dan Darble today, he still, he, he doesn't see any need to rush out and cancel Water Carnival. Uh, he thinks we can do that at any time in June. Um, he does feel there's about a one percent chance it's gonna happen. Um, the committee's been meeting and, and trying to come up with some alternates to it, maybe a little parade, maybe, you know, a couple other things they're working on. But, you know, unless the council feels otherwise, I think we just, we just leave this alone for now until we get a little farther down the road. Pretty good with that? And then I, I, a couple other notes I made, there's softball and pickleball. I don't, Brian, have you heard anything on, I'm assuming pickleball's done because the arena's closed, but what about men's softball?
I, no idea on the softball, yeah, obviously pickleball's done, but I haven't heard nothing on softball, don't know anything about it, so.
Okay. Becky, nobody's reached out to the City Hall at all?
Nothing that I've heard of yet, and, you know, just with the social distancing, I suppose on the field they could do that, but, um, I haven't heard anything. Chris, does, is Bucky involved in that still?
He is, and I don't think they've really had any discussions either. Just kind of waiting to see what they say, you know, what's allowed in that.
I think the governor will probably address that, and hopefully in the near future, on recreational sports like softball leagues and stuff, what his thought is on that, so. I just thought I'd, I'd, I'd mention it so everybody's thinking about that, so. Uh, well, since we already talked about the campground, showers and restrooms, I'll move down to D, Assistant Ambulance Director. Uh, Council Zins and myself, uh, had some discussion on this and talked to Mel about it. Um, she put a letter together, um, after she talked to Dr. People. Mel, maybe you wanna, uh, uh, address the council on your discussion with Dr. People?
Yeah, um, interim-wise, he did, he had no preference if it was a paramedic or an EMT. So, um, I did email the council that evening letting them know what he said. Um, I did send out an I am responding message, letting everyone know that we were going to be hiring an interim, um, assistant director, pay the stipend, and if they were interested to hand in a, uh, letter of interest.
Um, so to the council, I gue, I guess the stipend is, is one of my issues here, I think we need to address tonight. Um, you know, I'm thick kicking around the number three hundred dollars a month stipend. We used to have two of them, and I think we paid them a hundred and fifty dollars apiece. We'd be putting one on, what's everybody's thoughts on that?
I'm with you on that, Chris, I think that's a fine number, um. You know, I think that would probably be more than cover their time that they would have to spend in that position, so I think that would be fine.
Okay. Um, Beck, do we want a motion on that?
I think, uh, Mayor, on that also with, I think the number is, is probably fine. I do have a little bit of a concern about the job description is very broad, and for that amount of money, I mean, that job description was basically a copy of the paid position that we had for the Assistant Ambulance Director.
Yep.
And I'd like to see Melanie combine, condense that to a, a list of, of things that she would like, she does need help on, and she would like that person to go on a weekly basis if we were gonna go that route.
Mel, what are your thoughts?
It, it, it is very broad, but for the amount of runs that we have, the broadness of it is, I think, actually a necessity because, I mean, really, my biggest billing day is Monday because nothing gets done over the weekend billing-wise, but, um, that's not that lengthy to keep up on that. Um, so I think the broadness of it actually is benefit, because there's not, I mean, there are a number of things that can be done, it's just when and when and how, and so I think the broadness of it actually is a necessity. I, I, I don't think I could come up with any a list of things that needed to be done week, like every day of the week, that could keep them busy for that length of time.
I do have a question, um, did you talk to Dr. People? Obviously, he said it's okay for an EMT, for the interim position, what is his thoughts moving forward? Um, does he really want that requirement to be at the EMT level? Or does he want that to be at a paramedic level, however we decide to move forward after we're done with this COVID stuff?
We, we didn't really go, go past that because we got onto the COVID stuff, what we're doing on the ambulance and water carnival, which he is very much against. Um, so that's what basically we spent the majority of our conversation talking about was basically water carnival and COVID. So I didn't continue any more discussion on after the fact.
Hey, Brian, I think that's a good point, I think this council needs to have a discussion moving forward. Are we gonna make it a permanent position or, or, or stay to this type of, of position in the long term? I think that's something we need to think about.
Yep, yeah, absolutely.
I'm, I'm comfortable with this, uh, with this job description, Dan, I really am. I think it also leaves a little bit of open for Mel to give some directive.
Right, the part that, the part that there's, it's very broad, that depending on what the workload is for the week, but I guess it's, it's gonna fall on Mel's shoulders to, to come up with, you know, is this position three hundred dollars a month? So does that equate to a fifteen hours worth of work a month? Or do you wanna correlate that to make sure that we're getting our bank for the buck, and that you're getting the help you need, and the person is still doing what is expected of them, so.
I think we just basically do it on duties, if they're getting all their duties, love them, assigning them weekly, daily. So I, I think, like, I think there's gonna be, it's gonna be a little bit different where they're, like, every day I'm gonna have them do something, um, whether it be double-check inspections or come here at a certain time and do this. I, I, I feel like something a little bit needs to be changed down there. I'm still kind of thinking it over as to what exactly I'm gonna do, but.
Okay. Have you had any interest, any letters?
As of Friday, I had two.
Okay. And you don't interest in who they are or anything, it's just I'm curious if you have, uh?
I've had two and another one express interest, but I haven't received anything yet.
So here's my question to the council, um, Mel has a deadline of noon on Wednesday for these letters to be turned in. Does the council wanna, wanna have a special meeting on it? Or are you comfortable with, uh, HR Committee, Zins and myself and Mel making that decision for me?
Mayor, the Personnel Committee really shouldn't make the decision, they should, they could make a decision of who to choose, but that gets referred to full council.
Okay. So what, what's the council think? Should, where, are you okay with Dave and I and Mel talking about and coming with a recommendation to the council?
I think that would be the right way to go.
Okay, I'm good, I'm just, I'm asking, so.
I think that's fine.
Would you be okay with adding Chief House, if he's willing to?
Yes, absolutely, yes. We'll put Chief House on it. The four, the four of us will go over the letters and, and come to a recommendation. If I call a special meeting next week, if we get an update, I'll add that to the list, otherwise we'll put it on the, the next council meeting. Is that, are you with that, Brian? Okay?
So Mayor, um, we really need an approval, uh, council approval of the job description, um, including a mo, and then a motion, um, regarding the stipend, and, you know, like, an approximate, uh, effective date of that, um, stipend, and when that job, that person will start.
Okay. Can I have a motion to approve this job description with a three hundred dollar a month stipend?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Council Zins, support?
I'll support.
Support by Council Segler, any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Mayor Vreeland?
Yes.
Council Zins?
Yes.
Segler?
Yeah.
Pop?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries. Um, and then a start date on this, I guess that's gonna depend on, uh, on, uh, when we can get this back to the council, so I'll just do start date when the council makes a decision on it. How does that sound? We good with that? Okay.
So Mayor, Mayor?
Yep.
I could, uh, I believe this item eight C is more pertaining to the new restroom and shower facility.
Oh, oh, okay, okay, I'm sorry.
Well, part of, part of the agreement with Takata, with, they did the, the drawings and stuff on that, is part of their fee is covering the opening up for bids and, and various, uh, services to provide it once we decide on a, a contractor and the build schedule, so. I would like to, uh, he said we needed a motion and approval to go ahead and open this up for bids for the new restroom shower facility. And Kenny, I do have, uh, the contact person, Greg Cooper is the contact person on that, and I've got his cell phone and, and work number. And I'm assuming that this would probably fall on your lap once the, the bids are opened up, or once we do make the, the recommendation to open it up for bids, so.
Okay. Uh, Dan, do you wanna make a motion on that for tonight to open this up for bids?
Yes, I'd like to make that motion that, uh, we open, have Takata open up the bidding, bidding process for the new restroom shower facilities out at the point.
I, I do have a question, um, have we heard anything on that grant for that yet?
No, the grant, the grant is, will not be decided until the end of June.
Sure.
And obviously, the grant will be very large in the decision as to whether or not we do the whole project, or if we maybe just do the restroom part of it, or how, how we proceed, but I think it is, I think a good first step will, to get a actual firm price of what it's gonna cost us just to do the, the shower and restroom facility, because we're gonna need that information, say we don't get the grant, and let's say the bids come in double what, what Floyd had projected this to cost, you know, then we may not do anything out there and may have to relook at the whole thing and come up with a, a, a cheaper building or, or what have you, so.
So I think. No, go ahead, Dan.
I think this first part of, of putting it out for bids, I don't believe that that necessarily ties us to having to commit to build it, does it? And I, I guess I'm asking that as a question.
I, I don't know that either, Dan, but I'm just, and, and, and I may be wrong, but I'm thinking if we don't even know what we're getting for the grant yet, why would we put it out for bids right now? Why not see what we get, then put it out for bids? I, that's just my take, and I'd like to hear what everybody else has to say.
Well, I think what we can do is what we're doing with the wastewater plant, Brian, we can, we can put it out for bids, so we got a number. And then what we did, what we're gonna do on the wastewater, we're gonna, we're gonna give the council a ninety-day window to approve. And we can do the same thing with this, we can make sure they write it in or that we have ninety days to decide if we're moving forward with the project.
Okay, then that's fine.
We might get a better price if we bid it now.
Okay, and that's fine, and I was just looking for some clarification, that's fine.
Yeah, and then, and, but I agree with you, Brian, I think the grant in my mind is gonna make my decision, you know, what way we're gonna go as if we get some money for this or not, so.
Right.
And we might only get part of the grant, so I think when, once we get those numbers put together.
Sure.
So did I, I, Dan, and you made a motion, did I get support on that?
No, no support yet.
Support on the campground, calling for bids?
I'll support it.
Support, was that Council Peterson?
Yes.
Okay, any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Mayor Vreeland?
Yes.
Council Zins?
Yes.
Segler?
Yes.
Pop?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Okay, moving on to new business, nine A. Um, supervisors have put a list of, uh, of part-time help to hire for the summer. Uh, I'm wondering what the councils feel on moving forward this at this time.
I'm fine with, uh, hiring of the staff, you know, but I'm gonna abstain from the vote because one of my kids is in the list, so.
Yeah.
I agree with Ryan, I think that, uh, I think it's good to get the people in place and, uh, you know, we'll just have to be flexible as to how, how much hours we're able to offer them, and it's gonna go contingent upon how things open up, but I think it's definitely good to, uh, to get the commitment, so we, we do know that when we need the people, we will have a staff that we can call on.
I know I, I've been talking to some of the supervisors with, with quite a few events not happening this year, or might not be happening this year. I've told them they need to get a list of, uh, of other things to do, and I know Kenny said they, for years, they've never been able to catch up, and it might be a catch-up year, and, and, uh, cleaning trails and, and ditches and, and lots of things, so. I'm, I'm in favor of, uh, of approving this list tonight, and with the stipulation that if money gets tight or something, we might have to cut back earlier than we normally do, but that'd be a, that'll be a council decision, and if and when that comes up, so. So can I get a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion by Council Zins, is there support?
I'll support.
Support by Council Pop, any other discussion?
Mayor Vreeland, did you want me to read those names?
Uh, I don't know.
Okay.
I don't think it's necessary.
Okay.
Um, roll call, please.
Mayor Vreeland?
Yes.
Council Zins?
Yes.
Segler?
I'm gonna abstain.
Pop?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries. Item nine, mosquito control, Dean Anstrom. Is Dean on?
He is not on, Mayor. He's sent quite a few emails, I think he clarified some of that language, Mitch. Did you get that last email I forwarded to you?
I did, apparently he has been charging an extra fee over the years for the city to be added to his insurance, his liability insurance, so, uh, the, the language in the contract's a little bit confusing, but it looks like the past practice has given clarification on how that language on the insurance works. And he carries a certain amount of liability insurance for his activities, and, uh, apparently, uh, when he goes and adds the city of White Lakes as an additional insured under those liability policies, he has been charging the city for that, or basically passing that cost on to the city as part of the transaction. Is that, is that correct, Becky?
Correct.
So it looks like it's pretty much, it looks like it's pretty much the same arrangement, generally the same arrangement and contract that you've had with them for a number of years.
Okay. Dan, do you got some comment on this? I know you've been looking into this.
Yeah, so that, that was the, the question I had was on the, because in prior. Yeah, so that, that was the, the question I had was on the, cause in prior years, he's come forth with a, with a recommendation or a, or a fee. And then at the end of the year, he has a lot of extra charges and one of them was the insurance. And then it took quite a bit of digging, but I did find that he was able to charge us, he backed charges for rental of the Kubota's and the gas for the Kubota's and, and postage for mailing out the, the flight collection boxes and all that stuff. But that, that was all listed in the contract. But the way that he's presenting this now to just basically, he's saying that he feels it's too late to stop the, the black fly collection. So he's just proposing that he's gonna come in with a, a charge of four hundred dollars for the regular route minus the campground until it opens up. And then it says, once the campground opens, it would be five hundred dollars a spray. There would be no up charges and I would have to say that we should probably get that language cleaned up then about him being able to charge us extra for the insurance. Cause it sounds like that second email that he, he answered back to Becky on, he said, that's why I don't like having to do the extra charges. And we're, we're just gonna go with this one set rate, which is a lot cleaner. And, you know, it's something that we can actually control and, and say, hey, I think that, you know, things are getting tight. But we're not using the campground that much. We maybe can cut back on the sprays or whatever. So i- it's a lot more controlled for us, so.
Let me, let me clarify, Dan. So what he's saying right now is he'll do four hundred dollars per time he sprays the town and if yes, the campground is five hundred dollars.
That's correct.
Is there a, is there a number of times that he's re- re- recommending?
He's basically saying about once a week to do it is what he's recommending. And in other years, I'm trying to think, I got some information here. Let me look. In prior years, when he did the, uh, applications, he actually went through and listed the dates. So that was black fly collection that he had listed by date. And I think what he, it looks like what he's saying, Mayor, is a, a total cost not to exceed six thousand dollars per year.
Okay.
Right. And then, so in twenty eighteen, Chris, I don't have the information from last year. But he did mosquito control, uh, the end of May twenty fifth, May thirty first. And then once a week in June, once a week in July, once a week in August and twice in September. So he did two, four, six, eight, ten, twelve, fourteen, sixteen. So sixteen times five, what would that come out to? Eight, eight thousand dollars that would be max that it would cost us maybe?
But didn't, didn't he say maximum six thousand dollars here?
Well, he's thinking that we may be able to get it down to six thousand, depending on, I guess, what type of year. Well, you know, if we have a really wet, boggy year, it, it, it might require more sprays, so. And then I think he also included, if for some reason we did have the water carnival, that would be a one-time cost of four hundred dollars.
Okay. Well, we could, Dan, we could make a motion tonight that not to exceed six thousand dollars without council approval after that. I mean, if he thinks he's gonna run out of it, he can always come to us for a few more sprays too.
Correct. And then we still are purchasing the, the act uh, control that, that he uses. So we buy that, we pay for the, the mixture and store it at our property. But, uh, he, he orders that for what he needs. So that, that would add to that cost. And in other years, that's usually cost about, I think that's listed on here. Somewhere around two thousand dollars for the, uh, uh, yeah, well, in two thousand, two thousand eighteen, it looked like it was about thirty-eight hundred dollars. But that also included all the stuff for the black fly collection, so. And I don't know, Kenny, do you know how much we have left over from last year as to, is there a fair amount left or would you have to check on that or?
Uh, as far as I know, we don't keep it, we, we order it, it arrives in the spring, he picks it up. And to the best of my knowledge, we don't see it after that, so I don't know that we have any.
Oh, so I guess that's another point, cause the contract states that the material would be ordered by him, but it would be stored on our property, paid for and stored on our property.
Yeah, and I, we don't, we order it or we receive it in the spring when it comes in and he picks it up. Uh, if he's storing it somewhere on city property, it's somewhere that I don't know about, you know, at the campground or some other building. I'm not familiar with where he stores it.
Okay, and it's possible that it could be at the golf course, I guess, so we could, I'm sure we can find that out, so.
I, I could do some checking, but to the best of my knowledge, it gets shipped to the city garage, but that's the last time we see it is when he picks it up.
Okay. So Dan.
We get back to the insurance. What was the deal on the insurance? That the city was paying for his insurance?
No, no, he, he has his own liability insurance that he, he carries on his business. Bu- but if he, since he's doing this on behalf of the city, if, if we wanna be added to his policy as an additional, as an additional insured party, then he approaches us, he passes that cost on to the city.
To my knowledge, Mitch, there is no additional cost to have the, our name put on there. I, I go through this, uh, uh, pretty much on a weekly basis at, uh, work. Any contractor that comes on property has to have our business stated on their policy as additional insured. And to my knowledge, there is no additional cost. It's just a, a matter of the insurance company typing our name into that, company's name into that place. I, I do have a different understanding. My, my understanding is if you're a business and you're carrying an insurance policy and you wanna add uh, an additional insured where potentially the insurance company could eventually have to pay off some claim. I, I do believe insurance companies do typically charge for that. I, that's been my understanding. It's typically insurance companies would charge some sort of a premium for that. I could be wrong. Uh, I don't know if in past years, when he has, if, when he has passed that cost on to the city, I, I don't know what kind of backup documentation he's provided to verify that. I'm not sure. Okay. Well, something to look at going forward. Thanks.
Yeah, the only thing that I found on that, Dave, is in twenty eighteen, he charged us three hundred and sixty dollars for insurance. And last year, it went up another hundred dollars. He charges four hundred and sixty dollars, so. And if you read that, that item four on his contract, it's really, and that's why I have gotten a hold of Mitch, because it's kinda, it basically says that he's responsible for it, but then he added a line in there that stated that we, we had to pay for, for adding our, uh, the city of White Lakes's name on there. So, and I'm assuming that, I don't know if we're paying for his entire policy or if like Mitch is saying, that it, the, the insurance was charging him that amount to add the city of White Lakes on there, so. But I didn't think it was right either way. The way the contract was written, I think that if he runs a business, he should provide the insurance and that should be part of his doing business. And it shouldn't be something that, that he could charge extra for.
Um, but Dan, he's not doing it at this year, correct?
Well, I wanna make sure that that wording in the contract is changed before you sign it, that he cannot charge us extra for the insurance.
And the other thing that I'm not comfortable with right now is not knowing, uh, how much the product is gonna cost. Um, and if he takes it, if, if he delivers it here and then he takes it to his house or whatever, how do we know he's not using it for other things? You know what I'm saying? I think I'd like to get a little clarification before I'm comfortable moving forward with this, that we should know. I, I, I like the four hundred dollars and the, and the five hundred with campground. Um, but it would be, it'd be nice to know what the product's gonna cost, so we actually know what we're spending.
I agree with that. And I, I don't know if, if Becky, if you wanna reach back out to him or if you want Kenny or Wade or somebody to do that, uh, if it means setting up a meeting with him or having him to try to give us at least an estimate. I know if, what if any was left and where it is stored. And then what, what the, the material cost is going to be for the spray itself.
I guess that's, I guess that's, go ahead, Becky, I'm sorry.
No, I can email him. That's no problem.
Yeah, if we can get a handle on what's gonna cost for the product and, and find out where it's stored, so we know our product's being, is being used in our town. So Dan, are we okay with tabling this for tonight then?
I think we can, being that he's not gonna do the black fly thing and I don't think we're gonna have to start worrying about bugs, you know, for probably, hopefully another month. So I think we do have time to, to table it till the next meeting, till we get a good clue on all those questions.
Could I get a motion to table this till the next council meeting for further updates?
I'll make a motion to table.
Motion by Counselor Zins, support?
I'll support that.
Support by Counselor Pop. Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Mayor of Ryland?
Yes.
Counselor Zins?
Yes.
Segler?
Yes.
Pop?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Okay, uh, item C, to approve the invoice of J and R wastewater dated twenty, April twenty second, twenty twenty, in amount of thirty-one thousand, three fifty-three seventy-five for the cleaning of sanitary sewer lines. What happened here was he didn't get here last fall, um, so there was no bill from last fall's, but he did twice as much. Um, and I know it's kind of a large bill and, and as of right now, it's supposed to be coming out of, uh, street, street improvements or what's, what's the line item?
Utility lines.
Utility lines. And I know it's gonna take a, a big chunk out of it this year. But, uh, it, this is one of those really important things we do. It, it really helps stop, um, uh, backups in sewer lines. And I know Mitch, Mitch would agree there that, you know, with us doing proper yearly maintenance, anytime if there is a backup, it really holds the city harmless against that, those kinds of issues.
Yeah.
Mayor, I would like to see at budget time that we, uh, get this in a line item someplace specific for this. If it's gonna be done on a, on a yearly basis or whatever, so that we're not taking that out of utilities or whatever. Um, Jake, I mean, was this a hit to your budget?
Well, if we didn't have a place to pay for this, this was gonna shut down us repainting the water plant this year. I have about forty-five thousand to get that done. And, uh, it's something that really needs to be done, but I do feel that maintenance is more important than a coat of paint. So, yeah, this is something I was told not to do.
Yeah. Um, Dave, I think what we need to do in budget time is this needs to become, this should be coming out of the water, this should be coming out of the wastewater funds. And it's always been paid out of utilities, which is general fund money.
Right.
We're really, it should be coming, it should be coming from the, out of the wastewater bills, uh, because that's what it's doing, so.
Right. And I guess that was what I was giving out.
Yeah.
Is when we do it at budget time to get that placed appropriately.
Yeah, I agree.
Mayor, in the old system, our old city management system, we had a street category. And when we moved into Banyan, uh, streets became under public works. So I think it used to be separate, like back in two thousand eighteen and prior to that, it was probably more identifiable than it is now. And so if you, I don't know that it's ever been under the water sewer fund though, ever. So that would be something new.
Yeah, we'll have to move that, Jake, to, and put that, uh, line item under the wastewater budget.
Sounds good.
If you can maybe talk to JR and find out, you know, before budget time in July, what his, you know, what's the yearly cost gonna be on that?
Yeah, he'll be back to televise a couple of lines, so I'll bring it up to him then.
Can I get a motion to approve this, uh, bill?
Mayor, one more question for Becky before we do that. I know that Becky had printed out a, a detailed expenditure on what is coming out of that utility lines. And I guess it's a question that I have for Jake or for, for Kenny. There's a lot of charges that were USA Blue Book that looks like they're pretty much recurring charges. And then it also looks like the auditors may have moved a fairly large expense that was for, um, Asabi Masonary. And I don't know if some of the repairs that we were doing to the sidewalks and stuff were also coming out of that fund, but it was like a twenty, twenty-eight thousand dollar item that was removed from that fund. So last year, we had like eighty-four thousand dollars in that budget. And then the budget line for this year was reduced to, uh, fifty-four or something like that. So we, we took a double hit there. We, we reduced the budget, but then we, we got a big whammy. And, you know, I know that the Winger bill are on here, but there's a lot of, a lot of the reoccurring ones were from the USA Blue Book. And I guess I don't know what that might be for.
That's for repair sleeves and, uh, stuff like that for repairing the work. I'm assuming Kenny, Kenny, I'm assuming that's like repair sleeves. Did you get them from US Blue Book?
No, no, Chris. I buy all mine from Ferguson. Uh, to be honest with you, I don't know what comes from USA Blue Book. It's nothing of mine.
Okay, something we should look into.
We do order lab supplies at the wastewater plant, water plant from USA Blue Book. But to my knowledge, we haven't purchased anything large this year. Just, uh, reagents for calibrations and other stuff we need.
But it shouldn't be coming out of that account.
Correct. Like you said, we'll have to dig into it further.
Okay. I'm looking for a motion to approve this bill.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Counselor Segler, support. By Counselor Pop?
Yeah, I'll support.
Any other discussion? All in favor? Oh, excuse me, roll call.
Mayor, one point, um, you want that out of utility lines then?
Yes.
For this time? Okay.
Yes.
Um, Mayor of Ryland?
Yes.
Counselor Zins?
Yes.
Segler?
Yes.
Pop?
Yes.
Peterson? Yes.
Motion approved. Last item, uh, D, approve the travel expense request of Sandy Schumacher, uh, for fifty-one dollars and seventy-five cents for mileage for Blight. I think she's doing a nice job. I like the reports. Uh, Dan, something light off, light layers on any update?
Uh, no, I think, uh, it's a fair amount. This is basically for the first three months of the year. So I think it's very much within reason. I, I see her driving it off a lot, so if anything, it may be skewed to the minor side. But I kinda get what you're saying. She's doing a good job. She's trying to stay on top of things. And, uh, I have no problem with making a motion for the approval of this.
I'll support that.
Motion by Counselor Pop, support by Counselor Zins. Uh, any discussion? If not, roll call, please.
Mayor of Ryland?
Yes.
Counselor Zins?
Yes.
Segler?
Yes.
Pop?
Yes.
Peterson? Yes.
Motion carries. Anything else to be brought up before this meeting tonight?
Adjourn.
Motion to adjourn by Counselor Segler, support.
Support it.
Support by Counselor Peterson. Roll call, please.
Mayor of Ryland?
Yes.
Counselor Zins?
Yes.
Segler?
Yes.
Pop?
Yes.
Peterson? Yes.
Good night, everybody. Thank you.
Good night.
Night.
Cause you're getting awful long.